Go ahead and call to order this regular city council meeting for Monday, July 22, 2024, September 28. All rise for the pledgeable agents, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Lanning, Pratt?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Ryan's?
Here.
Gilroy?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
I would entertain a motion to excuse absences for Councilman Lanning and Councilman Jenkins. They both made me aware that they would be unable to make this evening's meeting. Thank you for your support. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I am looking for approval of this evening's agenda as submitted unless changes need to be made.
Move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Thank you so much. Terry, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you both. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we have an opportunity for audience participation with a maximum of five minutes per presentation. Is there anyone that would like to come forward at this time? All right, moving on. We have our council meeting minutes of June 24, 2024. I'm looking for those for the approval as submitted unless changes need to be made.
Move to approve the as submitted.
Thank you so much. Terry, do I have support?
Support.
Thank you very much. Dan, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And Mr. Hanson, you had an opportunity to review accounts payable in Mr. Lanning's absence.
Yes. I had a couple of questions and they were answered. They were good.
Excellent.
And we have two actually chunks.
Okay.
What's a chunk of accounts payable called?
A chunk.
Two tranches.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. Move to approve checks 77640 to 77654 and ACH 954 to 963 for a grand total of $252,214.61.
All right, thank you very much. Did anyone have any questions regarding this first set of accounts payable? If not, I'm looking for support for the motion that's up before us.
So.
Thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ben Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, and then next tranche.
Next tranche. Make a motion to approve EFT. That's good. What's the difference between an EFT and an ACH?
Electronic funds transfer.
Yeah.
And ACH is automatic cash holdings.
Yeah.
Yep.
There you go.
Seriously nailed it.
Yep.
What is an ACH then?
Kind of off the agenda topic, I'd be happy to explain it offline. This is something that we do each time. It's basically.
I noticed that and I'm wondering, I know what an EFT is. I do EFTs occasionally. I never do an ACH, so, okay. Make a motion to approve EFT 984, checks 77659 to 77700 and ACH 964 to 991 for a grand total of $537,281.69.
Thank you so much. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you both. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ben Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
All right, moving on to our action items. We do have a few. So the first is a conditional grant agreement honor for all Memorial Trail. We do have a memo in our packet. I am going to turn this over to our city manager, John Hanifin.
Thank you. We've been tracking this issue for quite some time. I think the original Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund submission was about seven years ago. But I'm happy to announce that the county award the city an $800,000 grant for the honor for all Memorial Park Trail. There is a contingency that the millage is, the county millage is renewed in 2026 and that's countywide, not just here in the city. So they have included a tentative agreement and the tentative agreement is a resolution. Sorry for a little bit of lack of clarity on that. The total project as designed is 1.2 million. I do want to point out that the match for the Natural Resource Trust Fund will come from the operating engineers. There's a lot of folks, Kent Hall, Earl Wolf, that have worked with this together over these many years. So the upshot is that even though we're committing to the tentative agreement, we're not committing any city resources in the way of dollars for the project. All of the project will come from grant funds. And that's, we've been pretty consistent on that, that in order for that to move forward, that that would be the case. So happy to answer any questions you may have. The agreement is very thorough, very well crafted. You'll note that Mr. Barone is the author of such agreement.
Absolutely.
He's certainly reviewed it as a county council. And I also reviewed it as well. Certainly the agreement is fair enough to all parties included. So what you'd be approving would be the tentative grant agreement authorizing Mayor Gilroy to sign on our behalf.
Wonderful. And this is wonderful to see this type of money come back to our community from the county. And so obviously, Tim, you don't have any questions regarding this document because you prepared it, so thank you very much.
I did receive a waiver of conflict from both the city and the county on this, as we would, but it is contingent and it's going to be a while before you see any of this.
Sure, sure, sure. And we know that, you know, this has been a long time coming. This has been amazing work that Kent Hall and Earl Wolf and members of the community have invested their time in. And so a little bit longer to wait, I don't think that is going to bother us because it's going to be a beautiful park once we get done doing the work that they've envisioned. So with that being said, I'm looking for that motion. Yes, Dan?
I have a question.
Okay.
With the contingency on the renewal for 2026, probably the earliest we would see anything getting started would be like '27, right?
Yeah, that's a great question. So there's been some dialogue with the county staff on that in that assuming there's a successful renewal, we have been tasked, and the reason we're putting this in front of you now, we've been tasked with if there are changes in current allocations in the years '24, '25, and then into '26, there's funds committed by the county for those future millage years. And so if we have a shovel-ready project, we may be able to start earlier than 2028.
And that would be great. And we have like something, yeah, this has been on the hopper for a long time. Like this was one of the first things that was discussed when I got on council in '18. And if you, as you go through, if you look in your packet, like we have, what is it? The operating engineers who have committed to donate their time with their apprentices to do that. That's been lined up since, well, former Councilman Bizard is heavy with, he lined that up. He's been off council. So it's, things have been moving on this for a long time.
Right.
And it's good to see that, it's awesome to see that we've got this money even with the contingency.
I wanted to point out that attachment A provides some numbers that are, that I think are really fascinating and I'm really glad to see them. One of the questions I've had here as a council person is, there's Ingham County, which is large, and Williamson, which is our little town. How much do we contribute to the county? One of my questions has been from the police department. Do we contribute a large number of, say, speeding tickets? And so they get a lot of money out of it or something like that. And it turns out that we don't, but I know that now because the chief provides numbers on that, which is good. So this attachment A that shows how much revenue comes from each of the constituent parts of Ingham County and what percentage is provided by those constituent parts, we are down there at 1.4%. So the fact that we don't get a whole lot of money back from the county, partly, I'd like to see more money come back from the county, but partly, we don't, this demonstrates that we're not all that significant within the county.
I think, I think we are significant. I think it, you know, you have to remember this, these numbers.
No, 1.4 isn't a lot.
No, but you have to remember the numbers are based on population.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, the millage brackets and everything that we're in and what is it, the 18, 80% heavily override that we have. I mean, you know, we don't get a whole lot of money that we collect from the taxes that we take in either, though they all go to all those different millages. So great, great thing to point out, Terry, because that is a nice breakdown of our surrounding municipalities and townships.
Yep.
Who would like to, yes, Scott, go ahead.
Do you think they try to balance out the amounts that they're giving out versus the amount of these percentages or is it more project?
I think it's probably more project-based.
It's a good project.
I mean, $800,000 is a nice chunk of change.
It is.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to turn it away.
No.
Right?
But between now and 2028, we're going to contribute about 1.2 million. We're going to get about $800,000 back, but that's an interesting number.
That's pretty good.
Yep.
I'd like to get maybe back a little more than we can do.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic. Great dialogue.
Oh, yeah, so.
Who would like to second to the motion we have on the floor?
I'll second.
All right, thank you so much. If there's no further questions or discussion, Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Who made the motion?
Did we get a motion?
I don't think there was a motion yet.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion? We had a lot of dialogue, so.
Not sure what the motion was supposed to be.
John, can you, can you refresh our memories, please?
The motion is to approve or authorize the mayor to sign the tentative grant agreement and approve the resolution as a pad.
I'll make a motion that city council authorize the mayor to sign the tentative agreement and authorize, and authorizing the attached item.
Thank you, thank you so much. If there's no other discussion, would somebody like to second that motion that's on the floor?
Second.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Olsberg?
Yes.
All right, our second action item of this evening is Chainsaw Art in the Park application and permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in McCormick Park and Electric Control Commission Resolution. This is very similar to what is done during Jubilee. I will turn this over to our city manager, John Hanifin, for more information.
Thank you. There's two parts to this. One is approving the application and the permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in McCormick Park. Sale of alcohol in our parks, Dalstrom and, sorry, McCormick are allowed by council action. And as the mayor pointed out, these are similar to the actions that are taken for Jubilee. So that's the first one. And then the second one is to allow, it's actually Williamson Area Beautification Fund to submit an application for a special license for the event. The event is, it is a three-day event, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, but the request is just for sales for Friday and Saturday only. There will be beer tent setup. There's the, the full packet is included, which does include the proposed side diagram for that. One of the other pieces of this, there will be, assuming there's a successful outcome, we're required, because we do have a social district, to submit a letter that those two will not co-mingle. So you can still have a social district, but folks from the social district can enter the beer tent and folks in the beer tent can't leave with alcohol bought in the beer tent and circulate in the social district.
Dan, go ahead.
That's pretty much the same thing we have now, like if you buy a to-go beer at Williamson Pub and Grill, you can't take said to-go beer to Tavern 109.
Right.
So it's basically the same thing. It's just including the special license required for Williamson Beautification Fund and to have their beer taken apart.
I'm looking for the motion before us.
Make a motion to approve the application and permit for sale and consumption of alcohol in McCormick Park for the dates of October 11 to 12, 2024.
Thank you so much. There's no further discussion or questions. I'm looking for a second motion on the floor.
Second.
Thank you so much. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
All right, and we have a second motion. I'm looking for someone to make that second motion.
I have a motion to approve the Liquor Control Commission Resolution Application for Special License for Chainsaw Art in the Park Submitted by Williamson Area Beautification Fund.
Thank you so much. If there's no further discussion, I'm looking for the second for the motion on the floor.
Second.
Thank you. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Gilroy?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Moving right along to our third action item of this evening. It is the MML Workers' Compensation Election. We have information in our packet. I will again turn this over to our city manager, John Hanifin.
Well, I was hoping to get a break on this one, but. MML is our, they are, it's our state organization, but it's also our risk management insurance system of MML. And this is actually, the Workers' Compensation Fund is a portion of that. So we're electing, they're asking that we choose until the board members for that upcoming. There's three members that are up for reelection and there's three names that are appointed. So we are recommending that city council approve that the members as submitted.
All right. Any questions for our city manager regarding this? All right, I'm looking for the motion before us.
I'll make a motion that Williamson City Council vote for the three members to Michigan Municipal League Workers' Compensation Fund, the three that are on the slate.
All right, thank you so much. Do we have a second for this motion?
Second.
Thank you both. And just for our viewing audience, these candidates will be a four-year term beginning October 1st of 2024. We have Victor Cardona, city manager of City of Novi. We have Daniel Caugh, city administrator of City of DeWitt. And we have Bridget Dean, mayor from the city of Berkeley. Holly, will you call the roll, please?
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, our last action item for this evening is the DDA member removal for non-attendance. This was discussed during several DDA meetings, which I sit on. We did have a member who has not attended for the past six meetings. The information that's provided to us in the memo from our city manager, and I am going to turn this over to the city manager so that he can explain why this process is happening, what it states in our charter and in our DDA bylaws. And so, John?
Yeah, thank you. So let me read right from the bylaws. Appointment to the Williamson DDA is a privilege truly sought, carries with responsibility to participate in board activities and represent the residents of the city. Attendance at board meetings is critical to fulfilling this responsibility. The board does have the ability to excuse absences for cause. And if a member has more than three unexcused successive absences for regular special board meetings, the board may enact a resolution reprimand. In the event that a member's absence continues, the board may enact a resolution of censure or further matter to the city council for removal of the hold. So in this case, the board member has missed at least the last six regular meetings. Clerk's office and myself have attempted to reach out to them. This goes back to January or February of the year and we have not seen any response. And so the DDA board was, I would say, more than generous as far as allowing, you know, the board member to show up or to explain themselves, and we haven't heard that. So per the DDA recommendation, the staff is recommending that city council remove the member, grossa, from the DDA board effective July 23, 2024.
Thank you. And this is something that we didn't enter into lightly. We do have two other vacant seats on our DDA commission, so we are actively working trying to fill those seats. But, you know, based on the way that our language reads, this is the correct thing to do. And so I appreciate our city staff's efforts to try to reach out to her to see if she was going to maintain her, you know, position as a board member. And so I am looking for that motion before. Yes, Dan?
As we get into this, I just want to say, in my opinion, when you've missed six successive meetings and it's one meeting a month, you've basically quit at this point.
Without submitting an actual resignation.
Without submitting any, you know, any resignation. And this person, I think, formerly had a business in town.
Yes.
That business is no longer in town. That's just my thought.
And certainly she could have filled, she could have fulfilled her term.
Yes.
And so, you know, we don't know the personal dynamics of that, but again, I feel that this is the correct move forward for that.
I agree. I just wanted to.
Absolutely.
I would make a motion to remove DDA member grossa from the DDA board effective July 23, 2024.
Thank you so much. Do we have a motion on the floor? Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, Holly, will you call the roll?
Hanson?
Yes.
Pratt?
Yes.
Ben Olsberg?
Yes.
Ryan's?
Yes.
Gilroy?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our action items for this evening. Moving on to discussion items, we do have a few. And of course, this is going to be all city manager, so I'm just going to let him roll with each of them. But the first is our construction project update. He'll roll into master plan update. Then he will talk about our main four safety improvements, which is our intersection at Grand River and Putnam. And lastly, on the discussion items, the welcome to Williamson sign. So city manager, John Hanifin.
We do have a special guest from Spicer, so he'll help write up the construction report in a day.
Yeah, yes you will.
So just giving you an update on that, we did have a walkthrough on North Putnam in the last couple of weeks, at least since our last time that we met, and developed a punch list item. Still working on getting the restoration on the easements, on the tree lawns. Also, sort of inevitability, some of those trees aren't going to make it. That's just kind of the nature of planting trees in a street environment. You're generally lucky if you can get 70% of them to live. So I think we're close to that. We did do some hydro seeding there on the last week or so. Hopefully we'll get a little bit of rain and that'll help it take hold. I just want to reassure folks, we're not going away. I mean, the construction crews will pack and leave, and I've said this several times. We're committed to making it right and making it work and making sure that grass grows there eventually. Will help us out a little bit, the folks that water the lawn on occasion. But so that's for North Putnam. There's a couple of drive approach things that we need to work, work our way through and we'll certainly get those done. We do have a walkthrough scheduled for Lloyd and Williams on Thursday of this week. We did do some restoration there, but again, it's kind of the same story, in particular on Williams. It's just, maybe it's just sunnier there, I'm not sure, but the grass is, is in this taking hold as well as on Lloyd. And we've said this before, and this doesn't, you know, make it better or make people feel better by saying this, but having the telecommunication coming through at the same time is, is causing a little bit, some areas, you know, have been completed and then they've been disturbed after. But so in those cases, telecommunications companies have been using either mulch blankets or straw on top. So we talked about doing that. We're not quite sure we have to do that yet, but we may. So that's the construction update. You know. Buy and art. Yeah.
I've only gotten positive, positive feedback on the whole stuff with Lloyd's because I'm right next to it, right? It's been very positive, except for the cable companies. People are just like, "Rrrr." But so Spicer and Iron Horse and all that, those guys have been wonderful, but the whole, the whole, we're doing all this stuff. The only fly in the ointment, the only little, you know, punch bowl thing is the cable company. Do we have any power over them? Can we tell them, hey, go back and fix that thing?
We do. And we have a performance bond for SurfNet because they're doing the most work. The other frankly discussion that happened with them is a curious business model that your new customer base, that if you go out and do a poor job of doing installs or tearing up their yard, not doing a good job putting it back, why would anybody want to do business with you? So.
And I know that it was, I believe SurfNet, they used a third party for all this, but that doesn't bode well for.
Correct.
Their bidding out of that job.
Right.
You know, because we personally experienced it on Williams as well. And I can tell you, a lot of neighbors loved what Spicer and Iron Horse were doing. Not some, not a lot of love for that. So I think that's a general consensus across the community.
I think we were heard somewhat with that, at least with Comcast slash Xfinity, because as more and more people complained about it, all of a sudden they were sponsoring a midday matinee at the sun.
Yep.
With their name all over it.
Yep, yep.
But then that doesn't fix people's yards.
It doesn't. But it shows that they want to have a positive, you know, vibe here in our community. So I do appreciate that.
So when you say performance bond, how does that work? They put the bond money up ahead at the beginning?
Correct.
And they finish it and then we return that money to them?
Correct.
And we don't return it to them until we're happy with it?
That is correct. That's exactly how it works.
Okay, so we do kind of have some.
We do. Yeah.
We have a little something, so that's good. All right. Main four.
Let's get master plan. So we had a work session, our first work session a couple of weeks ago, planning, I thought went great, a lot of good discussion. The survey is live now, so you should be getting a card mailed to your residents. If not, you can always jump online. We'll have it on our city website, have it on our city Facebook page. I'm sure the Facebook group that love to follow us will help us with that and share it and they'll hopefully participate. And we do have, it's from July until September because we want to cast a wide net. We did that and we had a long response time for the parks plan survey as well. So we're hoping that, parks are great and they're certainly a lot more fun than dealing with, you know, signs and setbacks and things like that. But the master plan, it's a critical document, really sets the stage for what the community is moving towards in the next five years and beyond. So we hope to get a lot of folks participating in that and.
Good question. How long was Parks wanting the survey?
About 45 days.
Yeah. Okay, good.
And John, just for our viewing community, we do have those dates on our city website when we're going to be discussing master plan workshops again.
Yeah.
We did have several community members come.
Yep.
In addition to our planning commission members that were there. I think McKenna, Jeff Kessler did a great job leading us through that PowerPoint and talking about it. So I'm excited to see that next work session because I'd like to, you know, see what he's going to bring to us for discussion at that point. But we certainly do appreciate community involvement. That was a big push for the survey that we're doing. So council members, feel free to, you know, if you've got social media, share that QR code or direct them to the city to get that information so that they can help us out.
And if you're marking calendars, it's just that's a regular planning commission day and time. It's on the first Tuesday of the month. We did meet the second Tuesday in July, but that was to move the meeting away from the week of the fourth. And so I think that worked, because we had, like I said, we had good attendance. We did focus on, at the meeting, you know, again, kind of recapping our, the joint work session we had with council and planning, that, you know, we feel that we have the right mix of, you know, residential and industrial, and that maybe office is maybe needs some study as we go through the process, because the office market is really kind of flattened out or it's really dead with remote work and, you know, leases coming up. And there's, you know, there's millions of square foot of office space all over the country. So that was sort of the highlights. And then also in the Williamson Road overview, changing some of the design standards and bringing those to bear. And we did have, it was good, we had the folks from the Plymouth Landing Homeowners Association Board who were really active in the planning process for the Dollar Tree and the Dollar General site. And so it was good to see them here and participating in that, so it was good. And so next time, we'll be, you know, just taking off a little bit more bites of the apple. And it is a long process, but I think it's, we're off to a really good start.
I would agree. Now to main four, safety improvements.
So we did, just in the last, end of last week, we restriped crosswalks all over the place. We tried to hit the main school routes, and, you know, we talked about that before. It's, there's a couple of different curves for it. It's the Lily Pad, because it looks like there are Lily Paths crossing or Continental. And so we did striping just south of the main four corner as an idea of what it could look like. We've been, Spicer and myself, we've been focused on wrapping up our construction projects. And we haven't had a design plan discussion yet with M.D.O., so that's forthcoming in the next couple of weeks.
I do have some sketches that I've been working on. I got to clean them up, because they're pretty, it's filled with red pen and highlighters right now. But probably next week, I'd like to sit down with you, John, and go over a couple of things on that. Those crosswalks on South Putnam there, I talked to some people about that. And I said something about how, I guess the city funds were wiped out or something like that. And the response was, "Oh, our tax dollars have worked." So it was, it was positively received. And I think it's interesting that, kind of like the sign over there in the park over by the, over by the school, the sign that you saw was kind of looking ratty, so you had to fix the sign, right? And it wasn't a big, you know, council recommends, yada, yada, directs the city council or anything like that. It was, "Look at this, we need these, these things could be better. I think we'll make them better," and you just kind of decided to do it. Wow, bravo Zulu.
That's why he sits in that chair.
Thank you, and through the chair, but the experience of doing it. But what they say, especially about the school crossings and by the parks, and as you get closer to downtown, that this is a pedestrian area. And that's, you have to do that. You can't just do it at the one intersection. You don't have to do all of them, because then it loses its effect. And like, I'm probably the least observant person in my profession when it comes to things like that. But if you see enough of them, then, you know.
Sure, so.
And we are a very welcome community.
So the ones that are in the four corners are going to do the same idea with the blocks?
Yeah, that would be one option. The other is having the blocks, but also have a different color in the asphalt. It's like, it's a coating that goes over the top. They don't really let you do baby M.D.O.-stamped asphalt anymore, like the fake brick like we have in concrete out here. But they will let you do a coating over the top for the entire crosswalk. And it's sort of that adobe-y brick color, kind of the similar bricks that we have out there. That's one, a lot of towns do that, especially when they're doing...
You need approval from the...
That's correct. On Grand River. Yeah, I mean, there's some, I mean, going back to the, you got old blues from the road diet, there was some differing answers depending on which M.D.O. person was speaking, that you have control, but they have, you know, some control over the, you know, kind of the beyond the actual intersection.
Well, and I think we would want to be as consistent as possible in main continuity, at least in the four corners. So probably don't want to get super crazy with like zebra stripes on one side, and then, you know, racing red across, you know, another section. But, you know, we look forward to those updates as they continue to come. Yep, and lastly, welcome to Williamson sign.
So the, this is another effort, it's very similar to the digital sign, where there was a group of folks who, they were passionate about this idea, and they raised money to do it, and the caveat being that in order to do it, they have to raise all the funds. Along the way, I mean, there was an expectation from that group that they were going to be able to put the sign somewhere out near the highway. And M.D.O. categorically said no. They have easements, and we do not have a wide enough easement along the corridor on Williamson Road for the sign to fit, other than two spots. And in one spot, it would be, it would be in a diagonal on Lynn Road facing to the south. And so if you come off the highway, that's really the area of Williamson, it's like the highway. So on that diagonal, the sign would fit. And there's some things there, there's some, and the reason on the corner, because we have easements on both Lynn and Williamson Row, right? So if we're able to cut the corner, and it gets into like the view triangle, and that's an engineering term for, "Can I see around the sign?" So we're looking at that, so that would be the preferred location. And there's a hydrant there, but we can make it work. If that doesn't work, in the industrial park, there's a pull-up park, that it's the old I-96 industrial park sign that's pretty careworn. The sign will definitely fit there, I mean, that's in our easement, it's not in the view triangle. So I just wanted to update you on that. I mean, if anybody had any really strong reactions, you know, to that, we could, you know, make this an action item at the next meeting, but...
Many, 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 many years ago, and for anybody in this room that grew up here, you probably would remember, and we could certainly ask the museum if they have a picture of it, but there was a Welcome to Williamson sign. It was a, what do I want to call it, that red, barn red color. It said, "Welcome to Williamson," it was scrolled on the top, and then it had the logos for each of the service organizations. It was very nice, and it was just as you pass Lynn Road coming up Putnam.
Is that anywhere?
No, it, no, would you know something about it? Yeah, right, I thought it'd be you. Something about the particular site.
She's describing it, I'm like...
Yeah, you know, don't want to, you know, toss my age out there, but I've been here a while. But yeah, so that sign was very nice, because it, you know, it emphasized the service organizations we had here, and it was very large. I don't think Chief Leclerc or anybody hid behind it or anything to try to, you know, catch anybody coming down Putnam. Weathered, you know, life expectancy of, yeah. So this has been in the works for a very long time. And just to make sure everybody understands to our viewing community, you know, I believe it's Rotary that's been helping out with our different signs at all of our entry points, "Welcome to Williamson" on our east, west, and our north. So the coming off of the highway is pretty significant. And so I look forward to, you know, seeing a new sign out there, and just have to figure out where to put it.
Can I add something?
Yes, absolutely, Tom, go ahead.
Is there a comment?
Yep.
You know, you talked about maybe placing the sign more in the industrial park-ish area as opposed to backed by like TSE area. And in just my opinion, I feel like when you come down the hill...
You have to slow down.
Past E&amp;G, and you kind of hit that spot. That's where it really feels like you enter like the historic downtown. So like, even back in the day when the sign was backed by like TSE, and you get that, "Welcome to Williamson," and somebody who's never been here before is like, "Oh, cool, they got an empty industrial park, get a TSE," just like every other country town. But I feel like our downtown is significant. And that could be cool to have the sign right as we enter that historic field.
Yeah, yeah, I think so too. That's actually a great observation. That would kind of be nice, because you're already slowed down to 25. You have to, you know, stop and smile as you go by. That used to be on our signs in Williamson every once in a while, too. So...
Smile, that's good.
So yeah, so, you know, discover the charm, stop and smile, welcome to Williamson, you know, probably all could have been on there, but...
My thought was exactly what Tommy was thinking. There's a big sign in the middle of a field that says, "Welcome to Williamson." Well, what is Williamson? As opposed to there, either in the town.
And you see the light in downtown, beautiful football field, like, in the palm.
Just a heaven, self-awareness.
Well, and just one last comment on that. Has anybody seen our Clean Water Tower? Because it looks beautiful. Thanks so much for sending those pictures out to us. Definitely a long task awaited, finally completed. And you can definitely see the welcome home up there. So, yeah, I think that'd be, you know, maybe that's my top vote for that sign location.
And we get to sneer at other communities that don't have Clean Water Towers.
There's a lot of them.
There's a lot of them. But ours is clean now, don't know how long it'll last, but...
They'll never look at Water Towers the same.
Yep, exactly. All right, moving on to correspondence received, information only. We do have a letter memo in here from Craig Molten, correspondence regarding 304 Rivers Edge. John, do you want to just quickly speak to that?
The only thing I'll say is that, you know, it's pretty self-explanatory. They want to convert one of their ground floor commercial stalls into residential. And I was telling Mr. Molten that the council had went through that with a different property, and it was rejected. And you're certainly welcome to write a letter, or you're certainly welcome to go through the process. But we are updating our master plan. I can certainly share the information with the planning. I'm not sure how much traction we'll get, because this question has been asked and answered already, but didn't want to deny him his right. So here we are.
And just for our viewing, sorry, just for our viewing community, that 304 Rivers Edge, that is on Grand River, in between River House Restaurant and Brent's Pizza, across from Mechanic Street. First floor is mixed-use retail office space, and then the second and subsequent floors are residential. So the request is, is that he would like to convert one of the first floor mixed-use into a residential. Terry.
You said the question has been asked and answered?
Yes, it was the two-story building right over here in Putnam. The vacant, they came to planning, and yes, no residential on the first floor.
The question was asked and answered, but that's like the downtown thing.
Well, that is considered downtown district down there, so, yep.
That one, that was the three and three vote?
I don't remember.
I can't remember exactly, but I think so.
Well, I remember it, because there was a three and three vote, and the one panel wasn't here, and I remember thinking, who knows how that would work? So if someone's trying...
I was just going to say, if we're going to take this up, we should have this as an agenda item.
Yes, yes, because it is just correspondence received. But we'll just see if he pursues it with money. And then, you know, if it moves forward, I'm sure it'll end up on our table eventually. Department type reports, John, city manager, increased post-tray's plan.
Yeah, so I haven't mailed an actual letter in a long time myself, but we do mail out bills here. We mail out about 800 still, which is still, it's roughly half of what we mail out. So again, just for way of future council meeting, we'll have a strategy of moving to 100% of e-billing, I guess you'd say. Folks would still have the option to request a paper bill, but there'd be a small charge for that. So just a relatively, it is a transition for folks to move from, you know, getting that paper copy. And there's some great spirit you have to have for that. But most communities have to move to this e-billing. Most, frankly, most things you get a bill from are, you won't get a paper bill anymore.
Are you talking water bill, or are you talking property taxes? Property taxes could be mailed with water, or just water.
Just water. Anything else to share? Yeah, you've done a lot of talking, all right.
We'll say that in a couple of weeks, we do have dog days and then coming up.
First weekend in August.
Fun weekend in the town. National Night Out is also coming up, and I'll let you speak to it.
And that's a perfect segue down the row there to Chief Weiss. Thanks for being here this evening.
Yes, thank you. I just came from our National Night Out fundraiser at Culvers, and wow, it was busy. So the statistics speak for themselves on the report that was sent out. The planning continues, we're a little more than two weeks away from National Night Out. It's coming together great. We, it's going to be bigger and better than ever. There's a couple surprise guests this year for National Night Out that are going to be great. Then all staff, M. Coles, who's our licensing agent for police officers in Michigan, it's called Michigan Commission on Law Enforcement Standards, has now mandated 12 hours of training for each officer for 2024, and then it's going to increase to 24 hours of training for '25 and '26. So that can be done in various ways. However, M. Coles has now given us funding for that. So we have got that scheduled, and all staff are working on that. And that will be done well in advance of the end of the year. And that's all I have.
Well, thanks so much, we appreciate it. And for anybody that's never been to a National Night Out, I believe we're going back to how we used to do it. Last year, we held it at McCormick Park and also Volunteers Park, which is over by the Commons. Several years prior to that, because of COVID, we did novelty ice cream items handed out through the city. But getting back into McCormick Park with everybody there and just really coming together, I know it'll be probably very well attended, and people will be excited that it's back in that location, so...
Or maybe a banner event, because we have a banner this year.
Yeah, we do, yes, we do, excellent. Well, it's always going to be the first Tuesday of August. You can always count on that. That's always when National Night Out has taken place. So we'll have dog days the first weekend in August, immediately followed by National Night Out on Tuesday. So it's kind of an exciting five-day span here in Williamson. Also, in our department reports, we've received our Livingston County Department of Building and Safety Engineering for permit work being done for residential and also commercial. So it's great to see that there's activity going on. If you do have any questions regarding this, please see our city manager, John Hannafin, directly, and then he can make contact with Livingston County and get those questions answered for you. Now, moving along to committee, subcommittee reports. Anybody like to share from any of your board meetings that you've had recently? Tom, Nisa.
Yeah, we did have another Nisa meeting last week. And the, there's two things that came through. The big one that's been on the agenda there for the last number of months is the banking and investment policy. We're getting closer to solidifying that. They had an M-class representative that had been to talk to us about their program. And probably slightly more exciting for people to hear about is, they're doing a training for Radian Road, right in the Esker, kind of near like Waldo Road. Anyway, they'll be doing that soon, and they'll be doing some training scenarios in the house at the end of the event, working it to the ground, kind of exciting, so... But because of that, Radian Road on that day will be closed in that area, or at least cut down traffic.
Excellent, thanks for sharing, appreciate it. Anybody else have, anything to share?
Parks and Rec. Yeah, Parks and Rec, Terry. We do fun stuff, right? So we have fun discussing stuff. It's all about the funding, and apparently there is funding, but it required a very elaborate legal document, which apparently has been okay, been approved. And we're going to do the chainsaw thing, because it's been approved by, this is before this, it wasn't approved by the council, it is approved by the council now, so now you can give money toward the chainsaw art.
Yes, I saw there were sponsorship opportunities for helping to fund that. So certainly, if you're interested in chainsaw art, this is, this is a once-in-a-10-year, 12-year type of activity, and the reason why is because the sculptures that were created from our tornado that went through in 2008 have met their, end of their lifespan. But now there is a plan to have this fabulous event with world-renowned chainsaw artists to bring new sculptures into our park. And then because of the hardwoods that we're using, they'll be sealed properly, so we hopefully will get a much longer life out of them. And it's just, you know, another way to add to the beauty of McCormick Park, and a great event that that group is working on. So hopefully, everybody puts it on their calendar, and check out their Facebook page for it. And if you're out there in the community and you want to sponsor, there's information for that as well. Anybody else for their board meetings? Audience participation, again, maximum of five minutes per presentation. Anybody would like to come forward at this time?
You feed me to the water tower thing. The people on Weiss Street are very grateful for that cleaning of that water tower. So you got a lot of compliments. And they were also very thankful for the weed whacking from Mill Street coming around there, because nobody could see anybody walking. So you guys got a lot of compliments for taking care of that as well.
Thank you so much, appreciate it. All right, council member comments, Tom.
I'm good, thank you.
All right, Terry? Scott?
Yeah, so we tried to get surf internet, and they came and they identified, people came and identified where everything was underneath it, and they said they can't do it. Too much stuffing. So yeah, they wouldn't do it, so that's a bad one.
Hunker.
Yeah, and the farmer's market, I was proceeding nicely without the manager. But I hear there's going to be, they've interviewed people that are promising, and we're going to be looking at that as well. Now, in terms of the McCormick Park, I think it's important to remember just how beautiful that park is. And it's also important to remember how it's way more beautiful now than it used to be, for a couple of things. One is that the vegetation barrier that's growing along between the river and the thing, that used to be rocks and weeds, and yeast used to come up there and poop everywhere. It is just now amazing compared to what it used to be. And then the chainsaw art as well adds just a really nice cut. So I'm so thankful that they're doing it again.
Absolutely, thank you. Thanks, Scott. Dan, you haven't been here for a little bit, and we know that you guys completed Jubilee. I want to hear about it.
So Jubilee was highly successful. I know it's been a month or so, so it seems weird we talk about it, but it was very good. Chief had a great reception down there for, he was in the gum tank raising money for the senior center. I was about to say food bank, but it was the senior center. I think Jubilee matched those donations, and then a lot of the reserve put in money. He did a highly successful fundraiser for the senior center, people loved that. I wanted to ask, Will Long with the Studio Shop headed all that up for us this year. He did a really good job with it. And I meant to call him today to ask him the total amount of money we raised for the different charities, and I forgot to do that. He actually had a big thermometer, that he was marking it down on down there. And I got busy and I didn't see it, and I was like, "I need to check that out." Everyone was very happy with the fireworks.
And that was Kodak's hardware.
Yep, Kodak's did a great job sponsoring that this year, did an amazing job. Jeff Kodak actually joined the Jubilee Committee this year and helped us out with a lot of things. Got, we, a lot of you may have noticed over the last, I think it's three years now, we've been taking credit card down at the, down at the tent and the derby pit, and Jeff helped us streamline that process. We had been using Square, and the Square wouldn't work correctly, so then we would have to hand-type in every single credit card number. And Jeff hooked us up with his rep who does all the credit card businesses in all of his different hardware stores. And they got us some nice readers, and that's what, that was going much better. But things went really well, everyone was really happy. We've got a lot of people that have asked about helping out next year, and things we can do for next year. We're going to be down serving up hot dogs at National Night Out with Chief. The Lions have done that for many years, and Chief asked us, after we inherited a lot of the Lions equipment, if we would come down and bring the Lions' old grill down to do hot dogs. So the Jubilee Committee will be down there for National Night Out, doing up the hot dogs, but...
And you had a couple of new things. You had music in the tent the one evening, a local gal that...
We did. Jessie Adams, who, she actually just won a National Singer-Songwriter Award. I can't remember where it was out of, I saw it on Facebook, but she did a great job. People absolutely loved her in the tent on Friday night. We go back and forth on music in the tent. We have some people that really like it, and we have some people that the tent is for seeing people they haven't seen all year, and they want to be able to hear each other. So we try to find that balance between the, how much music to have down there, but that was really successful, people loved that. We had the bounce houses down there. Will, again, that was another, Will Long from the Studio Shop thing down. He had volunteered those for about three days. We had those up until the fireworks, people loved that. The derby was great.
Cornhole, Uger.
Cornhole, everything went well. Patty and Jordan Harvey, I always appreciate it when they come down. Jordan ran the derby for probably close to 25 years, and he gave it up. I don't know, you took it over from Jordan, so...
Probably around like '07.
But Jordan and Patty came down and announced the derby for us, and then... And that was always good when they come down and come back. And you get these people that have been a part of Jubilee for a long time. They come back and help out. That was really special and cool. Chris Lloyd did a great job at the Derby again. You know, big shout out to Mac Donley, who's the Jubilee President, and Dan Young, who's our treasurer. Dan had actually, he tore a ligament in his knee trying to load his generator into his truck so we could go fill a tractor trailer tire to move our trailers from behind the old ice house over to Jubilee. So he worked all through Jubilee on a knee that needed surgery. And then he just had surgery last week and that was successful. But just a big shout out to those guys. Dinet Gross, who heads up all our volunteers. She's the one that tracks everybody down, keeps a big spreadsheet, makes sure we have everything filled in for different people in the tent and doing the Derby and different things. Carol Kwoteski has really helped us out a lot the last few years. We, we love our volunteers, but taking tickets and handling money at the Derby gate, that's a special skill set. And there were years when the Derby would be supposed to be starting about six and we would have a line to Grand River at 6:20 because we just, we couldn't get people through the gate. And we got Carol down there two years ago and Carol and her staff just moved people. It's like they handle money for a living.
How did pre-sales go for the Derby this year?
Pre-sales helped out. People, some folks here that religiously come in and they buy their wristbands early and that helps a ton.
Sure.
But Carol and her staff from Independent Bank coming down, they whip people through. They do a great job of that. But it takes, it takes a lot of help from the community to put on Jubilee. And we appreciate everybody that comes out and helps us out so that we can keep doing it.
All right, well, viewing community, you heard a great recap of Jubilee. And while they haven't rolled up sleeves probably yet and started working on 2025, there's always opportunity to volunteer. So see this guy, get ahold of them. What's the website and the Facebook page name again?
So the Facebook page is where the best place to get ahold of us, that's Red Cedar Jubilee at Facebook. And you can also email us at redcedarjubilee@.
Excellent. So put that on your calendar for next year. You won't want to miss it. I'm sure it's going to be amazing, as always. You know what? Everybody had a lot of good things to say. I will just say that, you know, I'm, we're halfway through summer. It doesn't seem possible. This weather has been amazing. We've had great rain for people that garden and have crops. Everything has been going along fantastic in town. We've had great events, music in the park at the fan show. I can hear Brookshire every Friday night because I know they got music going on. You know, great theater performances. Head downtown and see a movie at the Sun. Come out to Dog Days. We're going to have the pup crawl, which will be Friday night, all four restaurants. River House, Nico's Tavern, 109, and Williamson Pub. We'll have special cocktails, special food items and water. And pets are available to come and hang out in their outdoor patios. Saturday, we've got a great list of activities for anybody that wants to bring their dog down. There'll be some sidewalk sales. And then I believe Farmer's Market will be doing a couple neat little things on that Sunday to kind of end out that Dog Days of summer that's coming up in two weekends. So please watch our Williamson Events Facebook page for upcoming events. We certainly love having people in town and, you know, showing off our community because our community is pretty awesome. But with that, I will go ahead and call to adjourn at 7:50.